Good evening and welcome to the Fort Smith City Board of Directors meeting. It's March eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-five. Keep in mind, these meetings are being televised live for the benefit of our residents who cannot be be with us in person. This time, I'm going to ask Director Kemp, thank you for doing the invocation last night, so we're going to let you continue by doing the invocation for us today, and we'll ask Director Suttle to lead us in the pledge.
Would you pray with me? Lord, we acknowledge tonight that the fear of you is the beginning of wisdom, as Proverbs says. And so tonight, we lean in and acknowledge your hand over our city, over our government, and over our nation. We ask that, Lord, tonight, we would steward the resources that you've entrusted to us wisely, give us wisdom in our communication with each other, that we would greater understand each other and come to great consensus that will bless the city of Fort Smith. So, Lord, may you be lifted up in all these things. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Director Rego?
Here.
Good.
Here.
Kemp?
Here.
George Katsavas?
Here.
Christina Katsavas?
Here.
Suttle?
Yes.
Martin?
Here.
Thank you. At this time, I will ask if there's any members of the board that may have an item for discussion that's not already on the agenda. Director Good, you recognize?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call for a study session as soon as possible. Want to thank Mr. Dingman for an email he sent out this week about the meter coding and billing issues. There were four, well, three of us board members that were on the board back in like two thousand and seventeen or eighteen when we passed the measure to start, is it AMR? Anyway, I think we need to really look at what's going on with the meters and the billing. So I'd like to get a study session on that to get a deep look at what's actually happening.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Anything else?
I would just like to say that I have to leave a bit early tonight, about ten till seven. I know it's a short agenda, so I think for all mindful brevity, we can get through most of it.
Okay, I agree. Thank you. Director George Katsavas?
Andre, was there a specific incident that brought this up?
No, not other than Jeff sending out the email and then just reading the details of the of the of the email.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. If there's nothing further, this time, we'll ask for approval of the March fourth regular minutes.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. This time, we'll go to the first item of business. Mr. Dingman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mayor. Item one is a resolution amending the Board Best Practices document. This item was discussed at the March eleventh study session, and as noted, city staff has offered minor adjustments to the language to reflect terms and practices currently used. With those minor adjustments, this item is presented for the Board's consideration.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, did anyone sign up to speak on this particular item?
None indicated.
Okay, thank you. This time, we entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments from the Board? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Director Rego?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
George Katsavas?
Yes.
Christina Katsavas?
Yes.
Suttle?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Approved. Seven in favor and zero opposed.
Item two.
This item contains two ordinances regarding separate amendments to the two thousand and twenty-four and the two thousand and twenty-five operating budgets relative to funding allocations for various departments at the request of the Board. Item two A amends the two thousand and twenty-five operating budget. Item two B similarly amends the two thousand and twenty-four operating budget. Chief Financial Officer Andy Richards will speak to this item.
Okay. Thank you. I want to talk about both items together. So one item is related to the two thousand and twenty-four financials, the reallocation of the four programs, city clerk, Board of Directors, mayor, city administration, and citizen and citizen services, which we have been calling sustainability. So that's that's the same program. But so in the in the board packet, I kind of laid out, gave you some financial scenarios of the impacts of this, of these potential reallocations. And I think I laid out my memo. My biggest concern with this is the impact of the general fund. The reallocation for two thousand and twenty-four would charge additional two million two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars to the general fund, and for two thousand and twenty-five, it would be two million four hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. And so, you know, this process of funding, the government allocating these costs among the funds, you know, we've been doing this for since as long as I've been involved with the city, which goes back a couple fifteen, twenty years, and I'm pretty sure that we were using a similar methodology even before then. So this has been something that we've done for a really long time. So this this change is a big change, and typically, these type of allocations, these are permanent. This is not something that you do one year or the next. From an accounting standpoint, allocations, methodologies need to be consistent. If there's a lot of going back and forth, you know, I think, you know, you could you talk to different accountants and other people, you know, I'm concerned about what the credit analysts might think, but moving back and forth, doing this, makes you look like you're manipulating the financials. And so this is something that, you know, needs to be justified, preferable, and be supported. So, you know, making this change is just not for one year or two years. It's it should be intended to go forever. And I pointed out, you know, the general fund is not in a position to take on an additional two and a half million dollars a year in these allocations in its current state. You know, I pointed out, the original budget is showed a deficit of five point seven million dollars. Now, I look back to the original adopted budget because that was our base budget, if you recall. This is what we typically spend money on. This is our normal program activities. And then after the Board adopts that budget, we come back later with new needs, additional personnel, capital items. So I look back to that original budget and I say, that is our day-to-day, for the most part, our day-to-day annual operations. We're already running at a deficit at that point, five point seven million dollars. So obviously, we need to address that in going forward. But, you know, I don't, I'm not, I wouldn't recommend that we add another two and a half million dollars in these allocations going forward into the future to do this. Now, the flip side of that is, it does provide relief to the other funds. You know, I know Water and Sewer Fund is the one that we're most concerned about. It's been our priority, and I agree and understand that. And I know that you're concerned about the debt service coverage ratio. So my estimates right now that I have, as we work through the financials for twenty-four, without reallocating this stuff to the general fund, would be at a hundred and seven percent. And if you did make these reallocating adjustments in twenty-four, I estimate it at a hundred and thirteen percent. So these are estimates, you know, and I've talked about that before, we won't know for sure until we get to the end of the financials to make make every adjustment and review everything. But I think these are pretty good at this point. So, you know, the difference is, you know, I know it's enticing to want to say, well, we can meet the debt service coverage, and, you know, nobody wants to meet that more than I do. But like I said, I'm more concerned about the condition, the financial condition of the general fund right now. And, you know, we're talking about with these adjustments, I show, we're projecting that the end of twenty-five, if we reallocated both years, we'd be at a nine million dollar fund balance projected. But that's, you know, that is, that's eleven percent of our annual budget. And, you know, we have certain fiscal policies that talk about that, the contingency reserve policy, you guys know it well, but that would trip some, you know, some serious consequences if we go along with that policy. So, you know, I look at that debt service coverage, one oh seven, one oh five is not bad. It's close to one ten. We've got rate increases in the future. We've got a three and a half, we've got a three and a half percent that that we've passed to sewer. We've got a full year of the water rate increase that we've that we installed in January for the whole year of twenty-five. So, you know, when the when the credit analysts or anybody come calling me, they're going to ask what's what's going to happen next year. Well, we've raised rates. We've raised, we've got a full year of water rate, and we've got three and a half percent sewer rate that's being implemented in January first. We were close to one ten. So that doesn't concern me as much as the impact to the general fund, and that's the main point I wanted to make. And then I wanted to throw another option out there that we've been thinking about. I don't necessarily, my recommendation is not to do anything right now, but if you want to do something, there's, I think there's also another alternative you might look at is the credit card fee charges. We could, if you want to reallocate something to the general fund away from the Water and Sewer, you could reallocate the credit card fees that were charged in twenty-four strictly to the general fund, and then also this short period of time in twenty-five when when the city was still, you know, bearing the burden of that cost, you know, as, you know, until we started passing the fees along on March first. So that is a finite amount of time of charging that. That would be another million-dollar charge to the general fund, I believe, for that, for last year and the first part of this year. For twenty-four, that'd give us six hundred and fifty thousand dollars credit to the Water and Sewer Fund in twenty-four, which, based on my estimates right now, that'd put you at one ten, as long as those numbers hold. But again, that's another option I just, you know, we thought about, and, you know, I wanted to tell you there's another alternative if you still want to do this, but I think, you know, my recommendation is we don't, we don't put any more heat on the general fund right now, and I think we focus on tightening our belts in all city funds and, you know, address our, address the issues that way. That would be my recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Director Christina Katsavas, you recognize?
So, Andy, that's funny you said that because I had kind of made the same calculation with moving those credit card fees from the general fund. You know, what I'm wondering is, you know, my concern is that putting ourselves in a position where where the general fund is kind of artificially low, and then we're going into these austerity measures. But I've been hearing a lot about zero-based budgeting, and for those of you that don't know what that is, and I know the department heads aren't going to like it, but it's, you know, basically, you're starting at zero, you're evaluating every cost area, so, you know, we would hold our budget meeting, the department heads would come in, and they'd have to justify new spending as well as old programs. So, you know, basically, spending becomes performance-based. I mean, would that be accurate, some some version of of zero-based budgeting? Is that something you think that could, you know, help us free up some some cash?
Potentially. There's also kind of a new model out that they call priority-based budgeting, which is similar to that, but it's, it focuses on what your priorities are, what are the highest, you know, because we're looking at the general fund, there's a lot of, a lot of that stuff is what we consider to be essential services.
I'm talking about even, I mean, from from utilities, like really trimming and eliminating ineffective programs.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I'm, I think, I think we should look at that, but, you know, I'm not so sure if we, you know, we can't get, you know, we can focus more work on trimming the budget to what we have. I think, you know, there's potential to get there, but I think that is, I think that's something that we should, could look at as well.
Okay, thank you.
Director Rego?
And I know this is a little out of order procedurally, but just for context for the discussion moving forward, since you mentioned it, would you, or you, Mr. Dingman, for the folks watching, you know, in the room and online, the contingency reserve percentage would be, you know, at eleven percent, you talked about if these moves were made below the twenty percent required? What are some contingency reserve policies that are triggered when you dip into that area?
Well, when you drop below twenty percent, when you, between fifteen and twenty percent, I believe the policy is, I don't ever plan on doing this, but this is by the Board's policy, but the first, the first fifteen to twenty is to cut capital expenditures. And then the next fifteen to ten, if you fall into that range, now you're, now you're forcing personnel cuts.
Are those decisions that are made by the administrator and the CFO or that come to the Board with the directive of, hey, you have to, you know, hit a certain target? What's your guidance on that?
I mean, I believe that is a Board policy, and the Board would direct us how to do that or ask us to do it.
Well, then, I believe that we would then work through the process and present to the Board some amendments that would achieve the needed milestones.
Yes, I mean, that was just a context question. I think it's now, you know, motion second.
Right, we'll do that. Right, we will. Madam Clerk, did anyone sign up to speak on the item?
We need to, yeah. We have four people that signed up to speak. The first one is Levon Morton.
Okay.
Yeah, we did.
I am Levon Morton. I reside at seventy-two-hundred Riviera Drive in Fort Smith. I'm a certified public accountant with an active license, and I want to comment on this item. First of all, this allocation change, and I agree with what Mr. Richards wrote in his memo and what he said, would put an ongoing significant financial burden on the general fund. Consistency of accounting is one of the bedrocks of accounting, and investors and others, such as bond underwriters, rely on organizations to consistently apply accounting principles. While debt covenants compliance is very important, once a failure happens, taking steps to try to ensure future compliance after a failure is equally important. This Board has done that by passing those water rates in two thousand and twenty-four and that sewer rate increase in two thousand and twenty-five, making the change on on credit card payments in twenty-five. You have done what is necessary, and and people like Standard and Poor's and bond underwriters understand that. The most, really, when you sort this all out, the most important thing, the reason there's a debt compliance, debt coverage ratio, is so you can have enough money to make the bond payments. You've always been above one. One is the amount it takes to make the bond payments. You've never missed a payment. The they, what the underwriters want is a cushion. That's what the difference between one and one point one oh is. So you didn't have the cushion they want, but you you made all the payments. In the general fund, the larger categories of expenses are critically important, and they tend to increase over time due to personnel costs. You know those police, fire, IT, parks, planning? Most general fund revenue is fixed in nature. The county sales tax, the property taxes, franchise fees, state turnback revenue, you have no control over that. It's fixed. When the general firm runs out of fund balance, it'll also run out of cash. I urge you to vote no on this proposal, and if I got to have ten seconds more. I have, in the past, researched this issue on on credit card charges. There is no set accounting principle. I think it is fine, as a CPA, to consider that a general fund expense, particularly since the Board made the decision, and I was part of this in twenty-two, to keep that as part of the, to not charge it to citizens. That was a Board decision, Board things or general fund actions. And I also agree, the Sustainability Department could be put back in the general fund and not allocated. I don't know how it's treated, but Andy mentioned that. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Director Martin.
Next up, we have Kim Fodge.
Good evening. Mr. Richards doesn't recommend that the budget allocations occur. However, I do believe we need to keep as much money in the Water Sewer Department as possible. I do agree that we need to cut expenses. My only question is, how helpful will these cut, will the cuts only be in order for us to meet the debt-to-service ratio? These cuts should have been recommended prior to the budget being presented and approved. It's not fair to department heads to have to go back and cut their budgets four months into the year. To me, it's a waste of resources, and their time could be better served elsewhere. The Board needs to do everything possible to make sure that the water rates aren't increased again. People cannot afford it. Our rates at the POA that I represent, just for the irrigation alone, is going to be almost sixty percent increase. That's not including just the regular water that we use. So not only businesses are going to be impacted by this rate increase, but citizens are as well. So you need to do everything possible to meet, make sure we meet that debt-to-service ratio and that rates are not increased. We've got to cut expenses, and we've got to do it now. We can't wait until the end of the year when we're scrambling because we haven't been able to do what we need to do to make sure that our debt-to-service ratio is met. Thank you.
Next up, we have Crystal Cardelli.
Good evening. Something that really stuck out to me that Andy said is that, you know, it looks like we're manipulating funds. Well, the truth of the matter is, we are. We are manipulating funds because of all the past mismanagement of our money. We need to reallocate this money. I understand that the general fund is running low, and I think to resolve that issue is that we take the four point two million dollars for the water slide from the parks budget because that's what the people voted for. They voted for a one eighth sales tax to go for capital projects for parks. Parrot Island Water Park is a park, and that is a capital project. So that would help us to recoup that money into the general fund and still allow our water and sewer budget to be left alone and not be taken from. You know, we can't continue to make bad decisions and then burden the citizens with increases. I mean, I, I'm going to keep saying it, we, we have an ongoing infrastructure challenge. We need to be focusing on our infrastructure. If we continue to let it go and decline, I mean, we're just going to continually be in, having this conversation year over year over year. So my ask is that we take the four point two million, we put it back in the general fund, we leave the credit card funds alone. They did that to to put it in the water and sewer, to be, to meet the one ten percent. We need to do that. We need to comply with the federal government and get the DOJ off our back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Chris Cardelli.
Good evening. Real quick question for anyone to be willing to answer. I think I know the answer based on a lot of the discussion we've had so far tonight, but the four point two million for the water slide addition, it has been a burden to the general fund, am I right? I mean, I don't think there's much doubt about that. I think that's a real quick, low-hanging, you know, that's some low-hanging fruit right there that that, you know, we could, a good first step. While the Board takes steps to amend the budgets relative to allocations, I hope you all reconsider which bucket you plan to take, the four point two million, kind of what we're talking about already, for the water slide additions. We didn't, we didn't need the water slides. I mean, I know we're kind of rehashing something that's probably irreversible at this point. We didn't need them. We couldn't afford them, clearly, and our, our partner, Sebastian County, didn't even approve of it, which still kind of boggles my mind, how we managed to do that. But it's my understanding, these funds are being drawn from the general fund when they should come from the parks budget. While I understand this four point two million spend would only further balloon the already enormous fourteen million dollars spent on parks last year, this is clearly where those funds should come from. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. This time...
Mayor, I'll break this up into two votes. That way, if somebody wants to vote for one or the other, I'll do it that way. So motion, approve item two A.
Second.
Okay. This time, we will entertain comments from the Board. Director Suttle?
You know, I made this motion for a couple reasons. One, you know, for the, you know, we did a study and based on two thousand and twenty-two, and, you know, the people said, hey, we should pull more out of Water and Sewer, which was in the right decision, you know, because it was based on something during accident COVID. Other reason why is I chose the core four, five departments, that's it. I didn't go for everybody, I went just the core, basic government funds. Us, mayor, city administrator, city clerk. Basic, fundamental, that's it. I didn't go for any other department, just went for the core of it. I understand the burden it's going to do, but I also know what it's going to help. It's going to help the Water and Sewer Fund, it's going to help the street fund, it's going to help the solid waste fund. We all know there are solid wastes behind the scenes. There was a study being done, and I'm trying to help all the funds for stuff that's already being out there. That's my, that's my justification. You know, I understand where everybody's at, I get it, I get where everybody's at, but there's a point to where we can't go back to the citizens and say, we need more money, but we got this allocation for us. Sometimes you just got to pull the trigger and say, it's time to do it. to pull the trigger and say, it's time to do it. Other cities pull their basic government services out of the general fund. That's where they get it from. But the board decides to keep it like it is, maybe there's another road or avenue. That's the reason I have two different votes, and that way if you want to vote for '24 instead of '25 or vice versa, that you're prerogative. But I'd ask you, I think there's multiple board members up here have said, we're not going to vote on another water rate increase. We're not, you know, and so this is another way of giving funds back to their without burden of citizens of Fort Smith. Thank you.
Director Neil Martin, then Director Christine Cissavich, and then Director Rego.
Yeah, you know, when, when we, when we had the budget vote, I voted no because I wanted to look at our reallocation. And, you know, the reallocation came back and was worse than what I, I expected. So I don't feel like, in a reallocation process, we're going to get what we need. I think this accomplishes that. Now, you know, there were, there were two concerns. One, let's, let's minimize rate increases. Let's minimize the, the, the need for future water rate increases. And that's why I was, you know, I've been harping on that debt service coverage ratio. I was pleased to hear what Andy said tonight. We went from, I mean, 94, and, and you and I had a conversation after last board meeting. We're at 94, 95%. We're now at 107 if we don't do anything. But if we were to pass this in '24, we're there. We have, we've solidified us for '24 and years forward because we've got full years' worth of water rate increases. So that was the first item. Second item was to get more money in water and sewer. You know, and one of the things we've talked about is water leaks, you know, wanting to, wanting to have water leaks. This puts $1.4 million back into water and sewer. Water leaks are solved. So I, I think, to be honest, this is something that would, that would, that would benefit us. I think this is just one piece of other things we have to do. I don't like putting us down at 9% in '25 of a, of a fund balance. So I think we've got to make some cuts there. I think that's a good idea, talking about the water slides going to parks. There's $4.2 million right out of the general fund that is now in there, and we've got, we've got more cushion. So, so I think this is step one to getting us, as we make additional decisions in '25, to get us into a better, long-term financial situation. And it all, we also get to where Director Rego has his cuts package that we'll be discussing soon. I think that's a piece of it. I think there'll be some things that the other board members will be adding to that. I think this is step one in a multi-phased approach to getting us a better financial position, decreasing the chance to have water rate increases, and solving water leaks. So I think we've got a good opportunity here. Real quick, one thing. This is not a '24 and '25 item. This is a permanent thing. That's, that's what we're, that's what you're, I think you're, you're talking about. Even though we're voting on it in '24, that's to go back to the previous year, but I think this is not a one-time thing. This is a future plan as we go forward. So, you know, we're not, we're not moving things around just to move things around in '24 or '25. We're moving things around to give us more leverage as our citizens incur water rate increases and sewer rate increases for the foreseeable future.
Thank you. Director, Director Christine Cissavich.
You know, we're talking about moving the, the Board of Directors budget around. A big part of our budget, I think, was the, the lease payments on the building, was it not? Oh, on this building. Okay. Never mind. Because we, we don't have that anymore for 623. What fund was that coming out of? Because that's paid for, and that was paid for out of the general fund.
Right. And that is, that is paid out of the finance purchasing department program, the, the rent that was paid out of purchasing.
But we own this building, don't we?
We do not. Not yet. We're still, we're still leasing to own this building.
When, when will this one be paid off?
In the spring of '27.
Okay. We end it with like, what, like a $10 payment or some? Okay. All right. That's all.
Director Rego.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. I certainly respect and always respect and appreciate when genuine ideas and proposals are placed on the table for our consideration. So I say that with, with utmost respect to my colleagues who, who put this on the table. I just philosophically do not support a change of this nature for a variety of reasons that I'll share. Number one, I mean, I can't recall, I have a great deal of respect for our CFO. I can't ever recall a memo where he said very plainly that he does not recommend an approach that's before us. And so I weigh that carefully. On the philosophical side, you know, I, I don't agree with zeroing out from water and sewer or other funds, in particular, resources that go to the Board of Directors and the city administration, because we have leadership and decision-making responsibilities for those funds and things that happen. So I think it's entirely appropriate that some portion is allocated to us for the business that we do. I don't support, and we'll talk more about this when we, there's a study session on April 8th about the plan I put forward, and it's not just because I put it forward. I don't believe that a burden should just be shifted around from one fund to another. I believe that we should genuinely send some money back from departments to water and sewer and not backfill that and shift the burden to a different bucket of money. And last thing I'll say, just as an aside, is that, from my perspective anyway, meeting, and this gets talked about a lot, meeting the debt service coverage is not the only reason that water wa, rates are considered when it comes to adjustments. There's other things and needs that sometimes aren't being met, and so it's not just about debt coverages from my perspective. But I, I genuinely appreciate an idea and a proposal being put in front of us, and, and thank you, Director Settle.
Director George Cissavich.
Andy. So you, you use the word manipulating funds, right?
Yeah.
I, I agree with Director Rego. This is, this is shifting money around. And eventually, it's going to catch up with one side, one end or the other, unless we increase revenue somehow. Let me, let me ask you this. You see what's going on in Washington with the Dodge, the Doze or whatever?
Sure, yeah.
Do you not think that there's waste in, waste in city government?
I don't think there's waste. I think we can always be more, there's always opportunities to be more efficient. I mean, if there's, if there's significant waste in our budgets, I don't know about it, but I should if we did.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we get somebody like Levon Morton, a CPA and another CPA, say, turn them loose. Say you go to every department, give them access to the computers, everything they want, and see what they come up with.
I'm all, I'm, all ideas and help are welcome. I mean, I think we need to do, work hard. Like I said, I mean, that's, that's a big deficit.
Well, and if, if I may, Mayor, and, and, Dr. Cissavich, I mean, I, I just want to make sure we're not creating, and I don't think you're intending to do this, but creating an impression that there's some sort of secret numbers or figures that a outside CPA would have to have access to. The budget documents are online. I mean, we, we conduct our finan, you could disagree with how we do it, but the financial practices of this city are conducted in the open. And I know you're not intending to.
No, no, I agree. But there's somebody like Levon who's trained to spot stuff like that. I mean, I, I, I mean, there's no doubt that there's waste. There's, I don't know if you want to call it mismanaged, but the subscriptions for magazines, how many thousands of dollars a year is that? How many trips, tens of thousands of dollars a year? Now down, somebody's talking about taking a delegation to Singapore for $100,000 for evidently a vacation.
Who's, who's, who's talking about that?
Carl brought it up. He said, we're going to take a bunch, build a bunch of...
That's the chamber doing that. That's not city money.
Chamber, yeah, but no, Carl said that we're going to take some director.
Well, Carl's not here anymore.
Nobody's told me that. I'd, I'd like to get in on it if it happened.
Carl's spending's freeze over. He's not here anymore.
Yeah.
Director, Director George Cissavich has the floor.
So, Andy, are you, are you, can you just not cut loose and tell us what you really think?
He just did. He just did.
I did.
No, I mean, real, I mean, without, without fear of reprisal, just...
No, I'm, I'm telling you what I think.
I mean, you're a smart guy, but the, I don't think it's fair to the people if we're just throwing money or losing money that could be saved. I agree with that. Before you, before you raise prices and tax the people, we need to be 100%, 110% efficient. But I'm, I'm not going, I'm going to vote like Director Rego. I, I don't think this is going to solve a thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Kemp.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to share with our colleagues, I, I have concerns about the allocations as far as where I see that it goes, having read Andy's memo to us as well and his comments tonight. I am in favor of the potentially, is there a citizens and city services, just that fund itself being helped? That's a question. But I think we're talking about the entirety of it in this proposal right now. And I think, in bringing relief, and I think in your memo, Andy, you did speak to that. I mean, that maybe we consider just that department?
I think, I think there's, you know, I think there's a potential transformation of that apartment a little bit. And I think it becomes more of a facilities maintenance where we, where we transfer the maintenance costs of the new building, the Blue Lions maintenance cost, maybe some of the other buildings that we've been talking about. That's another budget unit, and it would have a different allocation based upon occupancy or some other, some other allocation. And I, you know, like I said, you know, I, I accepted that one. That one has never been allocated before because that was created in '24. It is about a $250,000 budget in total on a normal annual basis, and it's not necessarily consequential to the water and sewer fund or the general. I mean, I think, I would propose that we don't allocate that one for now, and we look at modification of that whole budget unit with the shifting of owning our own building and, and, and be it more of a building and energy efficiency department, and we look at a different type of allocation there. That's what I would say on that.
And that's why I think, Director Martin, I don't think this has been an unfruitful conversation. I think it's brought a lot of clarity, to your point, the 95% hitting out at 1.7. It seems like this brought a lot of intensity to the discussion. But I want to confirm, are you saying if we were to go back for 2024, take the credit card fees away from that, you know, giving relief to it in that way, that we would be spiking the ball right around 110%?
Possibly, yeah. I mean, my estimate is today. Like I said, I can't promise you that's going to be the end result, but we're getting closer all the time.
Yeah. And then a follow-up question. If, let's say we were close, like within maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars. Could you speak to the reserve adjust, fund adjustment in the utilities department? Is there a way that if we were, like, say, within a, if we did the credit card fees and we're within $100,000 or $200,000 of meeting the 110%, there is some adjustments we have within the utility department within proper accounting, correct, to make sure that we don't miss that ceiling just over a very small window?
No, it's got to be accounting-based. The, the, the numbers are what they are. I mean, I can't, you know, I can't, I can't make adjustments in there to change the, the, there's not a reserve for, that applies to the debt service coverage ratio. I'm not sure if I understood your question.
I don't know if I asked the question right. Can I ask Director, our former Director Morton, could you come up for a second? Can I ask you a question as well? Thank you for speaking tonight. My question is, the utilities department having a reserve fund that it holds itself, let's say it's around $600,000. If we were within a couple hundred thousand of, of meeting our debt ratio and we didn't utilize those funds the way we thought, are we allowed to make an adjustment to, say, $400,000?
Well, I, I will say this. Mr. Richards and I have had a conversation about, and I'm not sure if this is exactly the fund you're talking about, about the reserve for bad debts, which I think, according to Mr. Richards, is about $600,000. That, that is a number based on history. But in, in the recent past, the board adopted some recommendations that we all discussed and made to, to raise the deposit amounts that, that people make for utilities and hold on to those longer. So we don't get stuck with people who, who rent places, move out of town, and skip on their utility bills. And I think those, those financial changes that the board made will have an impact on the future losses from, from bad debts. And hopefully, the whole idea was, those should go down because we were getting, we were getting the city and everyone in this room was losing money because of people who skipped out on their utility bills. But, you know, if that's what you're talking about, I think that's an area where we could look at it based on the new facts, and hopefully, it would, it would generate a smaller reserve and create some perhaps additional cushion. I agree with Mr. Richards that, you know, the numbers are what they are, but you always should use current facts, not the history that came from a different time and different facts. So...
Thank you for that. I just want to make a comment that if we take the credit card fees for 2024 and get to the 1.10, but we're just short a little bit, I, I think that there's some opportunity there based on that conversation that we just brought about. The last thing I'd say is, you know, seeing where this vote goes, I'm interested to see where it goes. But if another approach could be maybe a phased-in reallocation, where, say, year one, you reallocate city, citizen and city services fully and shift 25% of administrative overhead to the general fund, and then the next year, you could really reassess and potentially increase the portion based on the financial health. Some sort of hybrid phased-in. Although I will say, I, currently, I, I stand in support of Andy that I, I don't think that this is the best approach. I would love to see, though, if we were to do just citizen and city services, but I would rather see us chase the credit card fees to get to the 110%. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, we're going to let you go ahead.
Just real quick, I'm sorry to, to cut in line before I have to go. Isn't citizen and city services, don't they actually do work for utilities? I think they used to be part of utilities, and then they split off. They're doing shut-off notices and things like that. I mean, to me, this is the one department that probably, most likely should be coming out of utilities because they do utility work. I mean, is that not right? It's the shut-off notices. It's things related to the utilities.
Project concern, right?
That was, so, yeah, that, that was the trouble I had with the city and cities. There's a citizen services budget unit that does the billing and collections. That's primarily for water and sewer and sanitation, and they're also customer service. So they take a lot of just the incoming calls that go out to the various, but that's the one I think you're thinking of.
Two different things.
And this other one was, it's basically got one employee at this point, but it's, or actually, we're adding, you know, some of the maintenance people from the convention center are moving over to help maintain the, the office building. And so, as I said, it's, it doesn't have a large budget, and it's, it's primarily, it's, it's function is really of facilities, city facilities, and energy efficiency for our facilities.
So then you need, like, I would just humbly recommend you need a name for, that we need a name for that that does not mirror the name of something that's already in existence.
That's, that's true. I mean, we're looking for the correct name. It's not sustainability because that's not what it is anymore.
Director Good is next in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor. Directors Rego and Settle and, and what else that has, have had input in the conversation, thank you guys. Particularly you two directors that have presented, you know, data with your intent. So I definitely see and appreciate the intent, but like some of the other directors I've already spoke to, you know, we've heard from the city's CFO as well as a financial professional. I just can't see voting any other way than with their recommendations. We've heard a recommendation from a board member talking about a multi-phased approach, which I have no problem...
which I have no problem with the multi-phased approach. But so far, that's just a plan that, in my opinion, would need to be, you know, heard by staff. Staff give recommendations and it'd be in Board approved, but we're not there yet. So right now, that's just a concept of a plan. And we need something that we can vote on tonight. So just, I wanted to thank you Board members for your work in this.
Thank you. Director Rego? Okay. Director Neil Martin?
So, Mr. Richards, we were at 108 in '23, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm just looking at my notes back from July 11th, '24. If we fall below 110%, we will increase rates. That was, I wrote that, I don't know if that was necessarily true. But we were at 108 in '23. And here's, here's what I, here's what I, I, I wrote down when we were talking about the negative impacts of falling under 110%. Number one, we'd be downgraded, meaning our borrowing rates would go up. Basically tells our investors our, our credit isn't as good. We'd have a negative outlook on our credit watch. The bond insurer could be notified and they would hire people to monitor what we were doing at our expense. Possible legal action by the bond holders, meaning a court could force us to raise rates. Those were all the things that were included or provided to us if we didn't raise rates. So if we don't hit 110%, that tells me these things are, are in play.
Those are, those are our potential, but we talked about, we're, this is not a material non-compliance being three points below. It's when you drop below one and the governing body refuses to take any action. Refuses to, of course, you know, the bond, the bond documents just talk about if you're below, then you, then you gotta raise rates. Well, that's not the only way to get there. I mean, we've talked about that. So I mean, we, you know, you, they don't, they don't say you're gonna lower costs. They're gonna say you're gonna raise rates. But the main thing is, is to achieve compliance. You know, and, and it's like Mr. Morton said, I mean, we're making the bond payments. We're not materially out of compli, we were close. And...
That'd be two, that'd be two years of close.
And like I said, they can say, what's going on? Well, we got, we did a rate increase last year, it got done too late, we didn't make it. But we've got another increase for the middle of the year and we've got 12 months of this, you know, we think we've got it addressed. Okay.
And just, and real quick.
I mean, I, that's what I'm saying, I mean...
Hold on, this is the second time you've, you've said that. I just wanna make sure that I'm clear on that. You said another rate increase.
The 3.5% sewer rate.
You're talking sewer, okay, okay. Just wanna make sure.
That all counts. And then we'll have a full year of the, the rate increase we did for Water in July. So it's not like we haven't done anything.
All right, just wanna make sure that we're, we're all on the same page.
And, and if I might add, I mean, I've had this discussion with Andy because I anticipated that question from Director Martin saying, y'all told us 110 needed to happen the second year or else. Well, but the thing of it is, is that the one, you know, falling below the 110 for a second year in a row will generate some questions. But the questions will be, what have you done, what have you done to address this? And we, when we can say we have passed a water rate increase, we have passed a sewer rate increase. We have, we will be doing some budget modifications to reduce spending. Those, those things that we can say are in place and are being currently worked on will have an impact on what the net result is of those questions when they call the CFO and say, what's going on here? And so...
We, we had a, we had a, a bond rating review with, with the credit analysts, with our credit raters, after we did the rate increase. And after we disclosed that we, you know, the reason for the, for them to check in, they said it was routine. I'm not, I'm not really sure if it was or not. They, they might have been checking in because of the, the coverage or whatnot. But we had, but we went through all this stuff with them.
Didn't, didn't our, didn't our outlook get downgraded?
I think we were put at, I don't know if we got, we, yeah, I think we had maybe a negative outlook. But they didn't downgrade us. But we, I told them then I wasn't sure we were gonna make coverage in '24. But we, but we were going to in '25. And the, the other thing, but the bank thing they keyed in on was our discussions with the EPA and the DOJ and the plan. We showed them the plan that you all approved or looked at to, to, to talk to the EPA. And that was a big, I think that was a big positive to them. Because we actually had a plan that could get this done, right, if everyone got along? And so I don't, they didn't, I think they put us on watch, but they didn't downgrade us. I think they were waiting to see what comes about with these negotiations with the EPA. So, I mean, there were some positives there. I don't think, you know, I, like I said, I don't think the 107 coverage or being below 110 is as heartfelt as doing this to the General Fund.
Okay, that's all I've got, Mayor.
Good, thank you. Director George Guttavas?
Andy, we don't have a website where the public can go on there and, and check expenses for the city?
All the reports that we send to you, the Board, the quarterly financials are on the website. And our annual audit and our budgets, we put those out there.
So that the public can access online what, 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 what the city?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I was curious. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments from the Board?
I'm gonna recommend that we take the professional advice of, of our financial people and count on their expertise to, to lead us through these situations. Are there any other comments from the Board? Madam Clerk, if you would, call the role.
Director Good?
No.
Kemp?
No.
George Guttavas?
No.
Settle?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Rego?
No.
Deafited.
Mayor, I'd like to motion to approve item 2B, which is the 2024 budget.
Okay, second. Okay, we have a second. Okay. Did anyone sign up to speak on B?
None indicated.
Okay.
Well, oh, I'm sorry. Crystal Caddely did?
So listening to all the comments, you know, I understand that we have professionals and I'm sure they do a fantastic job. But the concerning part is that our, not only did Andy, but any, any auditing that we had at the time and ongoing auditing and our city attorneys missed inappropriate spending by our mayor. So, you know, it doesn't give the people confidence that we are all assessing the budgets and the situations. And yes, George, they are online, but they're not broken down by receipts or, you know, specific projects. There are some things that I asked Jeff about that he thought was on there and it wasn't. And I understand, that's a lot of information. But my point is, is that, you know, we, we keep, y'all keep talking about shifting, but you are shifting because you increase the rates, the water rates, but then you increase project concern. Well, then you've washed out the revenue. So are, are you, do you have every citizen in mind or do you have a specific, small percentage of citizens in mind? I mean, I am trying to wrap my head around, you know, how you're making decisions. I think that you should put a survey out to the people that ask, hey, do you wanna continue to have sewer and water rate increases? Or would you like to reallocate the 1.8 parks tax to water and sewer until we can get our infrastructure under control? Give the people a voice. Give them an opinion and, and, and take it to heart. You know, I feel like we have so many problems. We have water meter problems, they're not reading correctly, they're not reading at all. Can't figure out where our bills are coming from. The sky's somewhere. You have $11 million of treated water that's, that's just running down the street. We have the consent decree. So, you know, I think that there are a lot of things that need to, you know, we need to go back and review and discuss before making decisions.
Were there any other citizens' comments?
None indicated.
Okay. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance? You already did, okay. Any other comments on, on B? Okay, Madam Clerk, call the role.
Director Kemp?
No.
George Guttavas? Settle?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Rego?
No.
Good?
No.
Deafited, two in favor and four opposed.
Okay, thank you. It's just time we'll go to item number three.
Item three contains two items regarding repair to hail damaged buildings. Item 3A appropriates insurance proceeds to the 2025 operating budget. And item 3B authorizes a change order to the contract with the roofing contractor to add the repair of an additional facility. Mr. Richards will address any further details regarding this item.
Yeah, so I'm gonna cover both A and B in the same, I mean, they're, they're tied together. So the change order is with the Dale Kramping Roofing Company. It's tied to the hailstorm damage, the insurance claim from back in April 15th of 2023. There was another building, it was actually the, the senior activity or the Senior Citizen Center Kavanaugh building, the discovery, it had hail damage as well. It wasn't noticed the first time around. They went to all the other 38 buildings and found damage. And so this building is being added on to the insurance claim from, that's being covered by AML. And then this is a change order to the original contract that had all the other buildings on it for $266,000. And so we had $183,000 proceeds that we did receive from AML. That was the original actual cash value, I believe. You know, as soon as the claim gets in, they, and so we have that, we had put that in the budget. I believe it was part of the carryovers that was passed. There was $183,000. And so we're working with the, with the adjuster to get the full amount covered. And so the difference in that amendment is the difference between that 183 and what the total contract is. And so I'm asking for, to add that to the budget on, in addition to the 183 that's already there. And then asking you to approve this change order to the contract.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Andy. Are there any citizens' comments on item three?
None indicated.
Need a motion to adopt the ordinance and resolution?
So moved to adopt items 3A and 3B.
Okay, second. Any comments from the Board? Seeing none, please call the role.
Director George Guttavas?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Approved, six in favor and zero opposed.
Item four?
Item four is an ordinance authorizing appropriation of insurance proceeds for various city departments in amending the 2025 budget. Mr. Richards?
Yep. So these, these are in rant, just various insurance claims that are not related to the hailstorm. But, you know, periodically, we bring this to you to get appropriated into the budget so that different departments can use their insurance proceeds to make the repairs. And so there's, there is a schedule showing what departments and the receipts. And, and so that's what the appropriation's for. It's no impact to any of the fund balances. There should be revenues in and expenditures out for the insurance claims and repairs.
Okay, thank you. Any citizens' comments on that item? Madam Clerk?
None indicated.
Okay, motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please call the role.
Director Settle?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
George Guttavas?
Yes.
Approved, six in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you. We'll go to the consent agenda. Mr. Dean, you recognize?
The consent agenda this evening has three items. The first is a resolution approving an agreement with MAHG Architecture for Design Services related to the consolidated 911 PSAT facility. We have an ordinance terminating the 1989 interlocal agreement regarding E911 services and a resolution approving a contract for 2024 traffic signal detection improvements.
I have a question on 5C.
Any others to be pulled? Just question. You recognize, Director Settle?
Stan, I know you're here. Oh, you got, you got, there's some citizens got...
Yeah, we have a citizen here to speak on 5G or 5C. Andy Postrick?
Thank you, thank you, everybody. I'm Andy Postrick. I love living in Fort Smith because of the citizen input section of the every meeting. You guys really listen to us, each and every one of you. I think I've talked to all of you one-on-one. I really appreciate that, so thank you. When we talk, talk about roads, one thing that I often bring up is that there's a balance between accessibility and mobility. Accessibility is how many places can the roadway take you? Mobility is how fast you can get there. So a good example of a highly, highly mobile road in Fort Smith is like Riverfront Drive. There's not much to, to turn on to or off of from it, but it can get you from A to B really efficiently. And there's a lot of value in that. And a highly accessible roadway is a local street. If your house is on a, a street with an alphabet letter in the name, that's a highly accessible street. One thing that we don't talk about very much is where is value created in these roadways? And on either end of the ex, exit spectrum, the highly accessible and the highly mobile roadways are the most valuable. But when you try to combine those two, that, it doesn't produce as much value for the city. So when you had something like, say, Fort Smith a few months ago come out and you had that survey, nobody likes Rogers Avenue because it tries to marry these two concepts together. So I think RDOT is also aware of this, so they're trying to move Rogers Avenue towards a more mobile, high-speed. They're lowering accessibility by putting that median in. So I think that this project is highly compatible with what RDOT is trying to do, and I, I'm supportive of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Stan, my question is really getting to the crux of Rogers Avenue State Highway 22. Why are we doing this instead of asking for RDOT for a 50-50 split or a 70-30 split?
This is completely different than the, the widening. It's, it's basically replacing equipment that's not working correctly now. The video detection that's out.
I'm, I'm not disagreeing, but my question is, RDOT has programs out there that they'll partner with us on certain things. Did we ask them if they would partner with us on this?
I'm not aware of a program that they partner on repairing traffic signals.
But these are, it's a state highway, right?
But the, the city maintains the signals. We always have.
So what, we didn't, did we ask them or have we, did we not reach out to them and say, hey, we're about to do this? Can we, can we talk about this? Is there something you're interested in? Because technically, it's a state highway, right?
Well, it's a state highway, but the, the, RDOT does not maintain in, in any entity in the state. The RDOT does not maintain the traffic signals. The signals are the responsibility of, like, for example, in Fort Smith, the city of Fort Smith maintains those signals. In the county, the county pays a company to maintain those. RDOT does not ma, maintain the traffic signals and equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Director Neil Martin?
Stan, real quick, or Matt, either one of you. There's video detection, these are radar. I mean, these are, these aren't cameras, right?
No, no, it's radar detection.
Okay, were, were the old ones, were they actually cameras?
Yes, they were video detection.
And they, they were, they were only used in terms of turning the light red, green?
Yeah, it's only used for detection of vehicles for the operation of the signals.
Okay, nobody's actively monitoring that, looking?
No.
Okay. But this is, this is radar?
This is radar, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on any other items? Did anyone sign up? Anyone else want to speak on any of these items? Any citizens' comments? Not willing to... Not willing to entertain a motion to adopt all percentage in the item?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. There's no further comments from the board, please call the roll.
Director Martin?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
George Gittsavas?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
Approve six in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go to the officials forum. I don't have anything. Director Neil Martin?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a few things. I, I do appreciate administration on the request of the board to get us out and about and amongst the community for our study sessions. We have, the next three study sessions will be on the road. And I know this is, the, the biggest challenge is audio and sound. I had, I had a number of people ask about sound and, and, you know, making sure, A, it's, it's on the video and then B, in, in the actual facility itself. I know there's a lot of things we can't control, but are there some things we can control going forward with that? So, I just want to make sure that I'm, that I at least make mention of that. I do, you know, I talked earlier about the water slides going to parks. I, I still want to explore that. The, the last thing I ha, I have, and I want to make sure that, I want to make sure that there's a unified front about this, but what are we doing from a unified front on the consent decree? So, meaning, what are we doing to get in front of Lee Zeldin? If you, if you, if you saw it today, this is not the first time he's done it, but he tweeted today that they are fixing the waters of the United States rule?
Yep.
So, I believe there are things that are, that are going to happen that are going to benefit us as it relates to the consent decree. So, what are we doing with him? What are we doing with our Region Six? The director of Region Six? I think we need to get in front of him as quickly as we possible, quickly as possible. What are we doing with President Trump? What are we doing with our governor? What are we doing with ADEQ, our federal legislators and our state legislators? I think we need to not just talk about and have one person do this and one person do that. I think we need to have a unified, unified communications out to all these people to make sure that they know what's going on, what we're trying to do and what, where we need help, especially with the new administration. So, I would, I, I would ask city administration to lead effort on that, to make sure that we have communications, multiple communications to all those entities. And as the board comes alongside and does whatever communications we have, whether that's an email to the governor, which, you know, we talked about a couple of weeks ago, whether that's tweeting Lee Zeldin, which I've done, and I think Director Settle's done. I mean, we're trying to figure out any way that we can get in front of him. But we, we all need to come alongside administration as they make these official communications to all those entities.
Very good, very good. Dr. Settle?
Don't forget Attorney General Pam Bondi, too.
Yes, yes.
That's, I bear, all I want to say is that Fort Smith was represented very well in two large cities this weekend. There was a thirteen, fifteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-olds in New Orleans at the volleyball tournament for the big jazz volleyball tournament down there, and the sixteen-year-olds and my, my daughter were up in St. Louis playing volleyball. National qualifiers begin. Unfortunately, none of us qualified this round, but we still got more qualifications to come. But, you know, it's nice to see Fort Smith, young women represent Fort Smith, parents represent Fort Smith and go to these cities. And you get to see what they do. And what I do is I don't look at the big buildings or what's going on. I look at the infrastructure. I really, I really think that people here really don't understand how blessed we are for what we have for infrastructure. When you see potholes after potholes after potholes, manholes after manholes, manholes, and your cars bouncing up and down in, in, in cities, I, I just, you know, I look at the, the basics and that's what I'm looking at. You know, they have a lot, you know, there's over eight hundred teams playing volleyball in St. Louis this weekend. A lot of people there. It was a good tournament, the girls did good, but, you know, Fort Smith, Fort Smith area was representative in St. Louis and New Orleans this weekend. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Director George Gittsavas?
Jeff, I want to ask you a question. Does the water park get free water from the city? Let me know.
No, that, well, they're not supposed to. They, they, it's built into their budget that they pay for water. I think there wasn't, in one particular year, I think the, the fire department had a role in filling the pools, so I think that was.
The leak issue?
Yeah, yeah, and, but, but by and large, the cost of water is built into the operating.
So, on their operating, operating expenses, is it a show payment to the city of Fort Smith for water?
I believe so, yes.
You're positive?
I mean, it is, the cost of water is built into their operating budget.
I mean, you're probably not going to see a line item in the budget that Jeff emailed us, but.
Yeah, I want to, you know, is it on the line item or the expense water?
I don't think it gets into that detail. I mean, I looked at it the other day when I put out some information about Paradis.
Okay, who all do we give free water to, other than city buildings?
I think that's it. I mean.
Animal shelter? Commission Center?
Convention Center is a city building.
Even though we don't operate it, we still get free water?
We still own it.
I don't know what to think about this, though. I'd sure like to put a dollar figure with all that and just see what are we, what we're looking at. Neil, I saw your deal on the, on the water park, the profit they made, but if that didn't include all the expenses, then that's really not a true reflection of what they.
I think it includes all the expenses.
Operating expenses.
Operating expenses.
Yeah, all their operating expenses. I mean, it's, it, I just showed the very data from the very first page, but all the details down below.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it includes all, what, it would have included operating, operations-wise, what they spent on water, what they spent on buying food, what they spent on, you know, maintenance of the, of the facility. I mean, all that would be there.
Yeah. You know, everybody out there, you know, they said, even, we got to cut expenses, we got to tighten our belts. You know, a few dollars here, a few dollars there adds up over the years. It's, it's, I mean, it's time that we're going to have to change our whole way of doing business, I think. You know, for years, it's been, this town's been about parks, walking trails, bicycle trails, which is fine, but we have thirty-five parks. That should be it. I mean, that, that should be it. I thought, I think we're in good shape, you know, recreationally, but now we've got to concentrate on saving money, showing the taxpayers that we're going to be responsible for their tax dollars. And I, I, you know, I mean, I voted no over the last fourteen years probably three hundred, four hundred times, just for unnecessary spending that I thought was unnecessary, but it, it's, it's time that we get together. I mean, if we have to have a study session and just, and doing, just a open forum between us and good ideas, that's fine with me.
That's the whole purpose of the goal settings that I brainstormed, goal settings.
Yeah.
Budget.
Well, also, when are we discussing your cuts package?
April eighth.
April eighth. So, April eighth is your opportunity to bring additional.
That's fine, and you know, that's fine, if we can save money, but let me tell you, the only way out of this consent decree is going to be with the government giving us twenty, thirty, forty years. That's the bottom line. Nothing's, there's, you can't raise rates enough to pay eight hundred million dollars. And you're right, let's concentrate on contacting these people and put some fire under them and get something done. We have a favorable administration now. I think maybe we can get, get a catch a break. So, that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Kemp?
Yes, Mayor, I got a, a little small list to go real quick. One, I definitely agree with Director Martin. After attending the National Leagues of Cities Conference and after going to the Capitol two weeks before that, or the week before that, I have not met a legislator or a governmental employee that is not aligned and agreeing with us getting more time. And so, I think the iron is hot, the time is now to get the thirty, forty years so that we can do the pay-as-you-go. And I've not, I've had great connections and I connected those to administration, meeting to White House governmental affair, intergovernmental affairs contacts, and so, I, I've just, I agree with you. Now's the time. Communicate, communicate. I would like to make a motion that we would consider to reallocate the 2024 credit card fees.
Second.
Second.
I'll second that.
To what?
To the general fund?
Back to the. Water sewer to? I'm, I'm amenable to it, but from the water sewer to the general fund. Just going to make sure that we're all in agreement on that, but I'd like to, I'd like to actually make that motion. Jared, a second? Okay. All right. And then the other one is, I'd like to make a motion that we move the camping ordinance where it was slated to be discussed and move it back to April twenty-second, mainly because the camping ordinance. There was a discussion to come back and talk about the no public camping and.
Oh, okay, that's, yes.
The reason I'm making that motion for, I just, see if I have a second, is that that study session would be on the road again, and I would like to bring it back to the study session where it's here at the blue line. So, I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
Also, would like to make a motion that we move the sports complex discussion to May twentieth following the sales tax vote.
When is it right now?
It is.
April eighteen.
We're going to be, we're going to be discussing that MOU before the sales tax vote, and I don't know if we're going to get clarity on reporting. People can take ideas that they didn't hear fully.
I think I have a lot more questions besides bringing an MOU because, you know, you've got to look at what other companies, other places doing. There's still some data requests that haven't gotten yet, so.
There's a, a point of parliamentary inquiry, though. I mean, that item was placed in a meet, I don't think it can just be moved with.
I think it's going to have four, it's going to have four to move it.
Well, I'm, I'm making that motion. I don't know if I have an agreement, but I, I'd like to move it to May twentieth.
I'd be fine in the middle of June. I'm, I'm good, second that.
We would need to have four, yes.
We need to have four.
I would like to get the, the data around that, so I'm, I'm in agreement with that.
Okay, we need one more.
Yeah, I will. I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, okay.
I mean, where I'm at on that issue, just to be honest, is I've had meetings with them, I've had good questions. The questions that I have can't get answered till they get an MOU, but the thing I'm trying to say is, let's provide the leadership and the clarity for this, and if we convolute that with the sales tax vote or any sort of where we consider it, it's going to become very detailed in the discussion, and I just want to make sure we stay focused on it. And the last thing, I just want to remind again or ask that we would get a list of buildings and lands, even including maybe unused pocket parks that could be sold.
There we go.
Considered to be sold and marketed and have that discussion as a board. One of those we're talking about is revenue and how do we get revenue is, you know, there was some acquisitions that were made, you know, for particular reasons or whatever that I think we can bring back to be sold. And so, I just want to, I want to echo that again. I don't know if I necessarily have a motion because I think they're still trying to do that, but I do want to make the plea, yes, one more time, let's get a list. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Director, good?
Thank you, Mayor. We had an employee, actually, we have a, a lot of employees that have been with the city for over thirty years, but we recently just lost an employee that retired in 2023. His name was Cecil Perkins. He was with the city, the city for thirty-nine years. He was the first African-American residential collection supervisor for the city of Fort Smith. He was the first AA Level Three boxing official in Arkansas. He was the first AA National Golden Gloves Vice President of Referees in Arkansas. He was the only official from Arkansas that ever placed in the National Golden Glove Hall of Fame, National Silver Gloves Hall of Fame, and the Mid-South Golden Gloves Hall of Fame. He's also has an award named after him in the National Silver Gloves. Again, we lost a very good employee and a representative of the city of Fort Smith, Cecil Perkins.
Thank you. And he was an amazing ambassador for our sanitation department. Amazing. Director Rego?
Obviously, condolences to Cecil's family, who I believe also had some connections working in the city and just all the friends and people who knew him. Yeah, I wanted to build a little bit on what Director Settle said about Fort Smith being represented well. I was in, and I wanted to share this with you in particular, Mayor, I was in Austin, Texas this past weekend, celebrating a buddy's fortieth birthday, and our friend JD Clayton played his first ever show in Austin, Texas as part of the South by Southwest Festival. And so, he was on the South by Southwest stage, a native Fort Smithian, Southside grad and a country music singer-songwriter. And to your point, Director Settle, about potholes, goodness gracious, there are a lot of potholes in Austin, Texas. My car was struggling.
Thank you. And if you don't mind, let me, let me back up and congratulate the Northside Lady Bears for winning another state title. That's, that's number nine. That's, that's number nine for Coach Ricky Smith, been an amazing ambassador for our city and a tremendous coach, and he represents us so well. And, and I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank all of the residents who came out to hear the State of the City address. We had a full house, and again, thank you so much for coming out. This time, we'll go to Administrator Dingman.
Just, just one reminder, we do not have a study session next week, Tuesday, March twenty-fifth. There will be no city meeting next week.
Okay.
Mayor, could I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
This is just a thought, the Acme Brick property, I think, here's what I think. I think we should do the two retention ponds or leave the active flooding and sell, sell the rest of the property, put that money straight back in the general fund. Couple of million dollars probably. Huh? Well, then, then, then the Parks Fund should have paid for the slides, what the general fund paid for, so put that money back in the general fund. But I'm just, that's just an idea.
Okay.
As y'all know, we're going to have to main develop that anytime soon.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Dingman, did you have anything else? Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we're going to go into executive session and announce board appointments for the Civil Service Commission, to the Fort Smith Housing Authority, to the Future Fort Smith Committee, and the Transit Advisory Committee. and the Transit Advisory Committee.